The Bunker Hill Keeper, he stops Devron Perkins, but Jason Davila is there to send it into the back of the net and give MC a two-goal lead. And the Raptors defense made that stand up as MC picked up a well-earned and much-needed victory. For County Report this week from the soccerplex in Boyd's, I'm Michael Brown.
Family and friends recently came together at the Clarksburg High School football field for a memorial dedication ceremony in honor of Gary Green, Jacob Dennis, Patrick Shiflett, and John DeRigie. Green, Dennis, and Shiflett tragically lost their lives in a car accident earlier this year. And DeRigie lost his life when he was struck by an Amtrak train last year.
Our community has done, gotten together and loved each other and done many things. But the PTSA, the Booster Club, the Chamber of Commerce came up with the idea of placing a memorial rock on the stadium where the boys played. It's really important to us and important to the kids and really everyone in the community because, you know, these young men were outstanding. We loved them, they loved us. These four boys are very special to us, and now they'll be with us through this rock throughout time.
Coming up next on County Report this week, it is time to enroll for the Department of Recreation's Fall Programs. And we'll tell you about a rabies clinic. Stay with us, we'll return after this.
Did you know there are more than 10,000 county government phone numbers? But there's only one number you need to remember for non-emergency calls, 311. MC 311 is Montgomery County Government's online telephone information system. Need information? Have a problem or complaint? Trying to locate a county government facility? Call 311. The call center is open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The website is available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
You illegally passed a stop school bus. I'm placing you in timeout. And this timeout means big fines, plus you really could have hurt somebody. That's why school buses are being equipped with video cameras to help kids like me stay safe. So respect the bus.
Welcome back to County Report this week, I'm Lorna Vergili. It is time to start thinking about fun fall programs. And for that, the county's Department of Recreation has opened registration for programs and classes. The county launched a recreation enrollment website where residents can open an account and register for classes and other programs. To begin using Active Montgomery, you must set up a new customer account at activemontgomery.org. You can find the fall guide online at montgomerycountymd.gov/reck or by calling 240-777-6840. Montgomery County's Office of Human Rights will host the Fourth Annual Friendship Picnic on Sunday, September 25th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Wheaton Regional Park. The event brings together diverse communities to share their cultures, traditions, and faith. Food, beverages, and entertainment for the entire family will be provided. We had James Stowe, the Director of the Office of Human Rights, on CCM's Mosaic TV program where he talked about the picnic.
I think one of the things that we want to make sure happens as well is that the interface goes beyond 1:00 to 5:00.
Right.
That maybe you meet someone that maybe you can now have dialogue with in the coming week or the coming month. Maybe it's an opportunity for family exchanges to take place. Maybe there's some mutual interest that you might develop or find out while you're at the Friendship Picnic that can again have some carryover impact beyond the day.
For more information, visit montgomerycountymd.gov/humanrights. We want to remind county pet owners that all dogs and cats four months of age or older must have a current rabies vaccination and a county pet license. The Montgomery County Animal Services and Adoption Center will hold the last rabies vaccination clinic for the summer on September 18th. The vaccinations are free with the purchase of a Montgomery County pet license. The clinic will be held between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 10:30 a.m. in Dirtwood. For more information, visit montgomerycountymd.gov/animalservices. And with that, we close this edition of County Report this week. Remember to like us on Facebook and to join us again at this time every week for a look I was going on inside Montgomery County. I'm Lorna Vergili, and thank you for joining us.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
He's coming back, he just needed his packet. All right, welcome everyone this evening. No changes to our agenda tonight. Looking to the future, tomorrow night, on Thursday night, we are actually, we're hosting here, the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter Meeting at 6:30. Then next Wednesday, the 21st, we have our council meeting here. We will begin with an administrative functions session regarding the city manager's evaluation. During our regular meeting, that administrative functions sessions are closed to the public. Our regular meeting will start at 7:30. We have tentatively scheduled a voting item on a resolution to proceed with changing the date of city elections. We have three work sessions, one an update from the Emergency Preparedness Manager and Emergency Preparedness Committee since September is Emergency Preparedness Month. We also have an update on streetlight conversion research and the results of the pavement condition study. And then on Sunday, September 25th, at Capital City Cheesecake on Carroll Avenue, we will have Unity in the Community Neighborhood Black Party. If you need any more information on that, please ask one of us and we can provide that. And then our regular meeting will be on Wednesday, September 28th. Again, we'll meet at 7:30. We will have a consent agenda for our voting item on a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of security cameras for Hefner Community Center and the Tacoma Park Recreation Center, a resolution providing for the appointment of the Ethics Committee, and tentatively a resolution providing for appointments to other committees. We have two work sessions that evening. One, a discussion of the Safe Rowways Committee's recommendations, including the request to allow bicyclists to ride on sidewalks, as well as a discussion of legis, with our legislative advocate. And then on Monday, October 3rd, we have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Committee on the Environment, the Green Team, starting at 7:15 in the Azalea Room. And if members of the public would like to attend that, you're welcome to. And then on Wednesday, October 5th, our normal meeting, we have a work session scheduled for a recap and discussion on our conversation on youth success. And that'll take us to, and October 5th, just for folks to know, is Walk to School Day. So National Walk to School Day. If anybody wants to walk to school with me. So that is our agenda moving forward. Now we will take public comments on voting items. We have one voting item this evening. It is a single reading ordinance authorizing additional expenditures for the development of the Flower Avenue-Green Street design. Any public comments on that?
I'm Troy Jacobs. I live in Ward 5 on Flower Avenue, and I would like to thank the folks from City Council, from the city staff, and community, and advisors that have actually sustained and supported the Flower Avenue-Green Street project to date. I think that we are really at a very different point economically, socially, and in terms of this project because of the forward-thinking that we have had over the last five to 10 years. And in part, I mean, what we have seen is a broadened scope in terms of the safety and environment measures of the original concept that we had five or 10 years ago. But I think the other thing that is really important is that we have been able to leverage other people's money to actually do an activity like this. So despite the cost overruns that have been discussed, I mean, this really remains a very good deal for Tacoma Park, and I would encourage City Council to approve the additional funds needed to complete this stage of the Flower Avenue-Green project. I also think that we're really at a crossroads. I mean, where I live on Flower Avenue, I'm going to see some disruption in terms of traffic, and it'll be difficult for times to get out of my street, and then also in terms of what it may do in terms of my property line. But the real benefactors, I think, of this will be folks that are farther down on Flower Avenue towards Piney Branch and Flower. This really represents an opportunity to develop transit-oriented, walkable, bikeable, environmentally-friendly infrastructure that we then in turn can build on as a city to develop, to support diverse development, and some increased economic, I mean, increased density that's needed if we want to talk meaningful and real terms about economic growth as well as safe neighborhoods and affordable housing. So this provides a foundation in many ways for the vision that we have in terms of a livable Tacoma Park. Again, thank you very much for thinking about this, and I encourage you to have, to support the additional funds needed for this stage of the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the voting item this evening? Then we will move to other public comments. We'll get to you in a second, Mr. Lovelace. Do you want to go first, Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy Dibella, and I'm in Ward 2, and I'm one of several residents who have been coordinating community involvement, first in the purchase and now in the maintenance of what we all refer to as the McLaughlin Woods. That's the property the city purchased about a year, a little more than a year ago, two point six eight acres on the backside of the McLaughlin School. So I'm here to, to share the results of an informal poll that was taken recently in the neighborhood about the name and to just put that in context. So after the city purchased the property, many people felt that they didn't want to refer to it by the name of the school. And so that's what started the conversation about what do we call this? And a long list of names was suggested, perhaps 20 different names last year. And at a celebratory potluck last summer, we took a straw poll and a couple of names emerged, and the name Dorothy's Woods was the one at the top of the list. Since then, there's been a lot of traffic on email, a lot of discussion. And just to be sure, one of the other coordinators said even, Iclacasa, decided that he would put together a poll, a straw poll, a computerized straw poll for the neighborhood over the last week or so, I think it's been open. And so he wasn't able to be here tonight, and I just want to share the results of that. And out of the long list of 20-something names, by far, the most popular choice was Dorothy, was Dorothy's Woods. The next closest, and we are talking two and a half times the highest score, so the next one after that was Ferry Woods. So, and the rest of them got a smattering of votes, and nobody put in the comment section that they didn't like Dorothy's Woods. So that just gives you a sense of what, what some people in the neighborhood with access to computers and a list serves, think about that. But quite seriously, if there is anyone here tonight, or if anyone has commented to any of you that objects to it, I'm not aware of it, but there may be somebody out there. And I think the big, the big point here is that people would like to call it something besides McLaughlin's Woods, and that's why we're asking to do this now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, and I'm here to speak on the same topic, and one I would like to thank council and also staff for all of their support in terms of acquiring that property. I know we have some new council members who weren't here at the time when we acquired that property, but I will tell you that I think that was one of the major successes of this community, to come together and work together with the city to acquire that property, including donating our own hard-earned dollars to, to that acquisition. And management. And so I, you know, echo what Cindy said. There, you know, we had a group of names, and I, you know, suggested a number of those names myself, and when somebody said Dorothy's Woods, and we need to honor Dorothy Barnes, who lived next to the property for nearly 93 years. I think, I think she was actually born in that house, and she told us stories over the years about the property. So she was very instrumental, and she was very supportive of the city buying that property as well. So I am fully behind Dorothy's Woods. I think anyone, I know other people who suggested other names, again, are like, as soon as they heard Dorothy's Woods, it just resonated with them, and so we're fully, fully behind this. I would actually urge the council to go ahead and name it now, rather than going through another process. We did go beyond, as Cindy pointed out, we did go beyond the Plan B group to have a larger community poll, and again, Dorothy's Woods comes out way on top. So I would really urge us, just let's not delay it any further. Let's set a process or precedent of just getting this going now, because it's been waiting for about a year now. Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right. Oh, you can use the rest of Catherine's time.
Somebody's time, but not Pat's time. So I'm sorry that I forgot, for those of you who are not aware, Dorothy Barnes is a lifelong resident of Tacoma Park until last year. She lived, she was born in the, in the backhouse on the property, Budding the Woods. She walked, she told great stories about walking to school through the woods, playing in the woods, playing in the stream that used to be there, and is now channeled. And also, more to the point, she was an active member of the community as an adult for many, many years, and has been resident historian for the city for some time. So there's, there's a number of reasons why this resonates with people, just for those of you who may not be familiar with her background.
And also, just to let people know, the beep does not seem to be working tonight. I'm not exactly sure. I'm pressing buttons and nothing's working, so.
If you want, I can go beep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm Lorraine Pierce, I'm Vice President of Historic Tacoma. Kate, you'll just have to be our beep, actually, tonight. I'm here really just to thank those community members who weighed in on this poll and voted for Dorothy's Woods. We, of course, at Historic Tacoma, would feel wonderful if we honored her in this way, and we think it's important to do that. I can't say it better than Cindy. She's contributed a lot to the community, and she grew up walking through the woods, and she's helped people focus and understand their history. So we, we understand you're going through a process, and we're thrilled about that, but really, I'm here to thank all those community members who took the time to vote for that, for Dorothy. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Lovelace, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. Live at 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, the Franklin. I'd like to tell everybody tonight that, ask you people if you've been following the issue on the access pipeline. They want to build a pipeline out in the Dakotas and stuff so that they can pump the oil down into the United States and into other areas along the river. But that river is the Native Americans' water supply. We don't want that pipeline there because if it leaks, that, that whole reservation's going to have their water supply poisoned, their main water supply. Their food supply will be poisoned. We have no right to do that to them people. Last week, they had demonstrations out there, and the dogs, attack dogs were sicked on the Native Americans. And that shocked me so much that I actually started to get sick again. And I went down to the demonstration yesterday and listened to a lot of what was going on. I felt that I can do something about it if I can only get my city to stand up and take a stand against the pipeline, make a resolution that we will not support the access pipeline. We will not support the abuse of the indigenous peoples in the taking of their resources and the damaging of their water supply. We will do what we can to protect it. And that's what I want to see done. Because we've got enough things, we just can't keep running pipelines every which way around and not expecting something to go wrong because they always have a nasty habit of forming a leak. And those leaks can never be fully corrected. They, they release poisons into our, into our environment, and we've got to be making peace with the environment as a peace activist. That's what I believe. We have to make peace with our environment. And this is a time when the city should stand up and take a stand against this atrocity. And also, I'd like to see the Tacoma Park Folk Festival started up again. I told you, my friend Larry was, was, may know people who can help volunteer for it next year. And I can give you his number if you want his number. He told me I can give you his number. His number is 240-305-1189. And his name is Larry Callahan. And you can, if you don't get him, you can leave a message, he'll call you back. But yes, I think those are two really important issues. The Tacoma Park Folk Festival speaks Tacoma Park, right there. It's like one big sign, we are Tacoma. We should not let that go. The 40th anniversary is coming up, and we cannot let that be squashed. We've got to stand up as a city and take back our festival. And we've got to stand up against that pipeline. Remember, that's human lives at stake there. And I love those people. I love them, love them, love them.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. All right, anyone else this evening, public comment?
Good evening, folks. Paul Hewden, Ward 3. I know you're going to be voting on, is this the one?
Yep, you're good.
I know you're going to be voting on the...
Flower Avenue?
The Flower Avenue Green Space. And in reading this over, there's a, it's like the third or fourth paragraph says, "The design firm has requested an additional funding increase to cover the cost of work to bring the project to final design. These additional costs include the following: revise the invitation for bids package and prepare 95% design documents for SHG." I'm very concerned about these partial bids, you know what I mean? We saw for the Development Attorney at the Junction, it went from $30,000 to $80,000 or $90,000. I don't want this last 5%, I caution you, that this last 5% doesn't cost another $100,000. So I would look for, you know, going forward, I would be, I would encourage the council to try to get these things as bid packages where there's a defined quid pro quo. There's a scope of work, for this scope of work, it's this amount of dollars. These open-ended last provisos lead ad infinitum into our pockets, okay? And then I'd like to see if it's possible at some time tonight that you can comment about the funding sources of this. I know it's going to be done by bond. How much, how many dollars is that actually going to cost the city and the residents in terms of additional tax dollars? If there's going to be an increase in property tax? If there's going to be some sort of addendum issue added to some budget that's going to be passed on to the residents? But most important, I'm, this really caught my eye, about 95%, you know? Because that last 5%, well, that's the most complicated part of the whole job. So I would caution you to look very carefully. In general, you know, like in reviewing the documents to my own rudimentary capabilities, I would say it looks okay, but I'm always apprehensive when somebody slips one in there and says, "Well, it'll be almost done, you know? I'll, I'll finish it one day," you know? Or something like that. You know, the devil's in the details, and the dollars are in our pockets, and I like to keep a few of them there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We fixed it. All right, any other public comments this evening? Go ahead, Ms. Metui. Yes, we're in general now.
Hi, Mary Jane Metui, Ward 2. I'm here for, for parents especially, it's adults. We've got four categories we're trying to help with: housing, jobs, and, oh my God, I hope we don't want to do that Texans guy do with, but remember, jobs, housing, whatever, but safety. We're glad that they're having this thing on the 25th, the Unity in the Community. Me and my friend in the PNA have volunteered to be in it, and thank you, spoke, speaking to me briefly last Sunday. Appreciate it, Kate. I'm, there's, since we're doing, trying to do so many things for, for our people, it's really difficult. Sometimes like my mind just slips away, I can't think of, focus on one, on one thing. But a lot of people have come and shown interest, including Kate, and Peter is coming next time, this later this month, and Captain Collington has come, and our great administrator here has come. But we've, you've listened, and thank you for listening, but please do something. I, I thought that recreation would be easy, but it's not. They keep telling... They keep telling me that they're going to help people like immigrants who have more people, because there aren't enough disabled people, they're not going to help us. We have to have more numbers. Like, I want to have more disabled people in Tacoma Park, really. But that's what they tell us. They keep playing the numbers game, and I'm really sad that you can't help people. And some of the people we're trying to help with chronic just, mental illness, and there's at least two or three women, I noticed in downtown Tacoma Park begging, who appear to be homeless. Bag ladies who carry around their things. And I think it's sad. I mean, can't you help people like, we help people like that? I mean, we're trying to help people like that. And please do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? All right.
Hi, Catherine Tunis. Completely different topic at this point. On Saturday, we went out with the Tacoma Langley CDA to clean up along New Hampshire Avenue, and there was one, there were actually a couple of serious spots there, but it was one that is public parkland that is just north of Larch Avenue, and it appears that people are pulling off into the service road and then dumping mostly construction trash and all kinds of trash down into the ravine there. I have notified Park and Planning, I haven't heard back from them yet, but the idea was to maybe take some action there to prevent future dumping. I think there was a suggestion of a fence. I don't know if Park and Planning is going to do that, because it's their land, but I heard you talk, Mayor Stewart, about possibly putting in some security cameras in the future and just, you know, in a week or so, talking about that. And there's a perfectly placed SHA poll that would be the ideal spot to put a security camera to see if anyone is dumping in that spot, so that if it happens again, we can catch them and prosecute. I have personally spent many after, well, I won't say many, but several afternoons of my life cleaning out the trash in that area, and I, we value that a lot. It is one of the conservation areas in our city, and don't want to see it trashed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments this evening? All right. For the record, tonight, we have one proclamation for car-free day on Thursday, September 22nd. So we have a mayoral proclamation recognizing car-free day on Thursday, September 22nd, and I hope those who need to commute on that day will not use their car. Now we'll move on to council comments. Any comments tonight from our city council? Nothing? No, now they're all on.
I wasn't sure whether I'd make it in time. First of all, to follow up, to follow up with what Ms. Tunis was just talking about, I was part of the expedition on Saturday morning that was picked doing the cleanup on New Hampshire Avenue. And I can tell you, boy, it was great fun, out there sweating like a pig, traffic flying by, and you're picking up somebody else's you-know-what, and, and you're parched. And I wish, you know, I've tried to encourage volunteers to tell, to encourage people, to let them know this is a good source of exercise, it'll help you feel good about, make you proud of all this, but you know, I realize now that that's just a lot of baloney. It's, it is, it's just a lot of, it's crummy work, and, and we ought to be honest about it, but it is important work, and, and there's nothing fun about it at all, hardly. Well, actually, there is, but I won't get into that. The point is, is that what you talked about is that it's really, really discouraging when you see where tremendous amounts of heavy construction stuff have been dumped like that, and it kind of takes the wind out of your sails when you're, when you're walking down the street picking up bottles and bits and pieces of all sorts of stuff, and all of a sudden realizes that you've got a problem here that's going to require machinery to pull it out. I also have sent an email to city staff about that. Haven't gotten a response on it yet. And I, you know, some, but just wanted you to know that I'm very conscious of this as a problem. It's not actually in my ward, it's in Mr. Mail's ward, but, but it just happened to be that I was part of that.
You can come anytime.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Okay, is that a, is that a promise? Really? Thank you. So that's all I really wanted to say just now. Well, as soon as I collect my thoughts, I may want to push my light a second time.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I think the exercise impact.
Is real, because Donald Trump said just his hand gestures counted for his exercise when he appeared on the Dr. Oz Show today. Yeah, so just a few things. Number one, I mentioned this to the city manager, there's evidently a traffic study on Tulip Avenue taking place, and we're just trying to understand what that's all about. So you don't have to answer that now, if you don't know the answer. A second thing that came up recently, I was at Victory Tower on Carroll Avenue, and they pointed out to me that with the bus shelters there, the one on their side of Carroll Avenue is sheltered, and the one across the street, more or less by the auto repair place, is a bus stop, but there's no shelter. And it's on, you know, Carroll Avenue is a state highway. It seems like we always have these issues. And apparently, there's some sort of policy by which the upkeep of the shelters is paid for by the advertising, and we may not be able to get that type there. So I'd be happy with one that didn't have any advertising, but maybe we can look into whether there's a bar to that, because particularly for the Victory Tower folks when the weather's bad, that would be a good thing. The third thing is, a couple of people in the, in the ward one started this idea off, in particular, Mike Royce, who's a new member, suggested that in the Old Town area, a lot of people don't really know exactly where the boundary is. We view it as sort of one downtown area. You know, Republic's in Maryland, Bus Boys and Poets isn't, Big Bad Wolf already was in DC and still will be when it moves. And Mike suggested having some sort of marker, not, and I'm back to him again, not in a Donald Trump-ish dividing way, but to sort of show where the marker is, to kind of bring us together, and maybe I talked to Historic Tacoma, maybe having a little sign there that would show where it was, and there could be a little map pointing around the corner to where the boundary stone actually is. And Historic Tacoma's interested, and I did talk to Brandon Todd, who's the city council member for that part of the district, and he also seems interested. So I think it's something that will be trickling forward. I just wanted to mention it to my colleagues as a, as an idea, and you know, the hope would be, it'd be kind of a fun thing where people could take pictures of themselves there, and maybe with one foot on each side, learning about the history, but also promoting that area, and actually helping to promote cooperation between our two jurisdictions. So, thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank Laura Barclay and all the people that helped organize Tacoma Folk this past weekend. I thought, I went to the gazebo, I didn't go down to the community center later that evening, but at the community center, it was a great event. I think Ms. Barclay did an excellent job. I don't know what the future of the Folk Festival is going to be, but I thought that was really nice. As many of you know, I am the vice chair of Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Committee, and last week, we had our first meeting. There will be nine legislative action requests that will be considered by the committee. There was a straw poll that was given to members. There will be three possibly priorities for the legislative committee for the upcoming General Assembly session. So tomorrow, the legislative committee will vote on these priorities, and I will let council know and city staff what they are, but right now, it looks like it's going to be highway user revenue, which is something that municipalities cannot solve with the state. Stormwater management, trying to make sure that the counties pay. And this is one that Tacoma Park submitted. Public utilities and state highway administration coordination with state and local governments. So it looks like those are going to be the three, but you never know with these bodies, so I will have more information tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. To follow up on Ms. Tunis's suggestion, our police department has a set of game cameras that we purchased for a diversity of uses, and I would just ask if those cameras are not in use right now, that associated with the illegal dumping that's happening along New Hampshire Avenue. It would be appreciated if the police would deploy those cameras. And whether it's followed-up enforcement action or just identify license plates and shame, we should, we should follow up on that. The second, I know the city manager's going to mention the dog park, and I wanted to ask that we think strategically about what the groundbreaking is on the dog park and, you know, plan that out and make sure everybody knows about it, since we're, we're close to that point? Before the ground freezes, maybe?
Oh.
Okay. Let's make that a dream.
Reality.
And then the last thing I wanted to bring to folks' attention, and it's, it's been a theme on listservs in Ward Two, and I think covers into Ward Five as well. At the bottom of Flower Avenue, where it intersects with Sligo Creek Parkway, there's been a staging area for a WSSC project. The city has, for many years, been working on a project at that site as well, at the request of the Neighborhood Association, three-ish or four years ago, well-documented request from the neighborhood on listservs, to make that intersection more into a T that maintains a safe intersection between Flower and Sligo Creek Parkway, in particular by slowing down the cars that currently are able to sort of veer around the corners from Sligo Creek Parkway and go up Flower. And so the goal is to get it to be a T. Right now, because of the staging project moving away and that area being turned into grass, which, which I think is great, residents have raised the issue of the situation being dangerous in that the curve is so sharp going from Flower to Sligo Creek Parkway, that you have to turn pretty sharply to avoid having your car go into the far side of Sligo Creek Parkway. It's, from my personal experience with the Toyota Corolla, possible to do with a small car, but with a larger car, it gets harder. And I know, I just wanted to mention that the Public Works Director is working with the contractor and the Parks Commission to try to get both the stop sign moved, is my understanding, potentially the guardrails adjusted, try to make that, that little bit of the corner something that's easy to turn around. But I just wanted to flag it for the city manager's attention, because it's been raised as a safety issue, but also make, make sure that residents know that the project that they have asked for and the project that we're working on is not that design, it's a design that will be safer for everybody and address the neighborhood's longstanding concerns about traffic coming off of Sligo Creek Parkway. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, what I really wanted to mention, several quick things. This Saturday coming up, September 17th, the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association will be dedicating, with the mayor's presence and the city manager's presence, a new sign for, to, that names New Hampshire Gardens. And it's special because it was designed with the help of the residents and led by artists who are part of art for the people, primarily Alice Sims and a number of people who work with her. And it's a beautiful thing, and I think you might want to look at it, because it's probably the prettiest neighborhood sign in the city. Now, and it's actually already there. It's at the inner, actually at the corner of Glen Side Drive and Carroll Avenue. So that's Saturday afternoon at 4:00. And also, that same afternoon at 4:00, the Hillwood Manor community is having its annual fall picnic in the, in the park in that neighborhood. And for the residents on Glen Side Drive, between Carroll Avenue and, and going all the way down south to New Hampshire Avenue, this winter, fall and winter, the city, Department of Public Works, is going to begin the process of doing the planning, design and engineering for a possible sidewalk along the entire length of Glen Side Drive. I know that's something that was petitioned to be in the queue, I guess, two years ago, and its turn has finally come up. And the last, another construction project is that the, in, in New Hampshire Gardens, as it turns out, at the intersection of Kirkland and Kennewick, which is not, which is within shouting distance of the Starbucks that, over there in that area, the city is going to be rebuilding that bio-retention basin. It's a big circle that has, that was built about five years ago. One of the first in the city that has, from an engineering point, never really functioned correctly. It tends to flood, and that's created a number of problems. And that, that's construction is going to be starting also in the not-too-distant future. So I just want people who are listening to be aware that these things are coming along. I'll be sending out more information on it.
Thank you. I have a couple of updates this evening. I also wanted to join and thank Laura Barclay and all those folks who put on Tacoma Folk this past weekend. And also, just in case, if people did not see it, we have a new water table that was purchased by the city and the OTBA. It was set up on the corner. You cook it up to a water hydrant, and it has a spigot and water fountain. You can drink water out of it. It has, it is filtered, and you can wash your hands, and it is terrific. You can fill up containers, and I would just like to, it was at the Folk, at the corner of West Moreland and Carroll.
Oh.
It was right there, hooked up to hydrant.
It will actually be used, we can roll it like a wheelbarrow to a variety of parks and things as different events take place.
No, I thought it was terrific, so thank you for that. I just also want to say that I had the opportunity on this past weekend to meet with a number of residents who are from or have connections to Sierra Leone and get to know their organization, and they're a nonprofit called TeGloma, and they raise scholarship money for young people in Sierra Leone. So it was very nice to spend an afternoon with them. I was also able to go with county council member Mark Elrich to the Cuban Embassy and meet there and talk, and get a tour. Lovely place, and talk about what they're working on in Cuban-US relations with the county council members. What else? We also had the Pine Crest Cookout this weekend. I want to thank people for inviting me to that. It is incredible how many young children are in Pine Crest. They were all over the place, and it was a terrific afternoon. And I'm hoping we have an update on the playground soon, because there's lots of children who really need a playground there. I'd also like to mention that I know I had a number of emails and conversations regarding a mail that the police department sent around to residents. That was, so I will say, I've had a number of conversations. I've heard both positive and some constructive criticism of what was sent out, that I have passed on to the city manager and to the police chief. To put this in context, I would say that I know those of you who like to come to our city council meeting or watch our council meetings know that the city council has been asking the police department to do a better job communicating with residents, and so I think that's a work in progress. And I'm glad that they're taking us up on that and communicating, but it's always good to get feedback on that.
Was that sent to everyone in the city?
We don't think it was, right?
It just went to two wards, two areas of two wards, and I actually liked the information very much. We're trying to figure out how we disperse that in a better way.
Yeah.
Was, was copy sent to each of the council members?
Exactly.
Exactly. That's part of the, that was part of the feedback.
And city manager.
Yes, exactly. Also, I attended the COG board meeting today, and I was asked to serve on the COG Legislative Committee. So I will be on that Legislative Committee, I'm sure, asking Councilmember Smith for some advice on that. And Ron Hardy, who I will not get his title correct, but is here in our Tacoma Park Police Department, did the presentation today for the COGS. Department, did the presentation today for the COG's Chief's Committee on Trends in Crime Statistics Around the Region. And he did a very nice job. So it was nice to see Tacoma Park well represented at the COG Board Meeting. And finally, I have a request. As I was going to the COG Board Meeting, I drove down Poplar, and, and I'm sorry to bring this up, I usually email these types of things, but there's a house under construction on Poplar and Fourth that I don't know if they've stopped construction, but where the protective, you know, orange fencing is and everything. If someone could just take a look at what's going on over there, I'd appreciate it. I think it could probably be secured better and safer. So I think that's it. So I'll turn it over to the city manager comments.
Thank you. I'll first go to a question raised by Councilmember Kovar, a little bit about, I'm not going to answer the question precisely about Tulip Avenue, but our police department does have the wire traffic counters, and they put them down in different places to see how many cars are going in an area and how fast speed is, often to see if there's an actual problem after hearing some questions from residents or council members. It's not, it's not a formal traffic study, it's just information. Traffic studies are a more complex project. And so I'll find out a little bit more about Tulip, but I believe that a resident asked to know what the, how many cars were going and what the speeds were. And they just happened to have them, so they put them out, so. I wanted to follow up on a resident inquiry at last week's council meeting. Our favorite finance bird dog in the audience, Arthur David Olson, asked if the unfunded liability of the Tacoma Park Police Employees Retirement Plan counts against the city's debt cap, and does the city council want to count it towards the debt cap? And I was very pleased that this question came up because they love good financial questions, and our finance director was also happy to get it. And we've talked about it and talked with our auditors. And I wanted to give a couple pieces of information, we'll be coming back to this subject at another time, but pension liability is not the same as borrowed money. And so just kind of, you know, like a bond. For auditing purposes, they're counted differently. Debts are considered to be the fixed amounts to be paid back over a set period of time with a certain amount of interest. Pension liability varies by the contributions made, the life expectancies of the participants, the return on investments, and the pension liability that we have is not new debt or new liability. The, having this liability is also not new, it's been in our city financial reports for a long time, but it was considered, it was placed in a footnote as opposed to on the actual financial statements. Also, we do not have, the city does not have a debt cap. We have a cap on tax anticipation borrowing, which we haven't done. We have a provision that any new indebtedness that is greater than 5% of the revenue budgeted for that year requires a public hearing, which we would do anyway. And there are general rules of thumb about what's appropriate for indebtedness. As we come back to the council to discuss financial policies, I think it is appropriate to both look at what we're comfortable with in terms of regular indebtedness of debts, as well as how people feel about the unfunded liability levels. And I just, they're two distinct things, but they are things that we should both be watching very carefully. I wanted to mention that the, okay, are you guys going to come up with a better name for Tacoma Junction's committee?
That's up to them.
Jeez. Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Process Advisory Board, met for the second time on Monday, the 12th. And with the guidance and in conjunction with the board, NDC will be planning a series of community meetings in the fall, and want to give a heads up to the community about that. It's to gather feedback from the community on the, on four themes. The form and character, including the facade setbacks, amount of glass of the Tacoma Junction project. What is the public realm, including both public space and green space, sidewalk, the sustainability features, green roof. Access and mobility, including the multimodal nature of the site and the current and future state of traffic and parking. And the retail and market considerations, the different types and character of the retail, and the impact on the, of the use on the site at various times of the day. So keep your eyes open for that, I think it'll be very interesting to participate in. I have a number of construction updates. For the Carroll Avenue Bridge, there's been different information that we've received since last week. There will be just one day closure of Sligo Creek Parkway under the bridge on September 26th, as opposed to a week, as was previously talked about, while they do some of the concrete work. And then they will want to do one further closure on Monday, October 3rd, and the times will be from 9:00 to 3:30, and they'll mark them and sign them appropriately. Our understanding is that Ride on Bus will be doing the right thing by that time, and we're also working with them on the signage of their bus stop signs, which are not good. As I'm sure Councilmember Smith knows, the work on Erie Avenue is continuing for ADA sidewalk work. It should be completed this week. There will be two sections of sidewalk that will not be completed right away because they'll have the Flexi pave installed in those.
May I interrupt?
Yeah.
Did we let residents know that Flexi pavement will be put on that section?
I don't know that.
Okay. Thank you.
As Councilmember Mel mentioned, there is some information on the dog park. Park and Planning Lawyers finally signed off on the legal access agreements to allow us to get to our property, to the dog park, from the Park and Planning Parking Lot. We do have a pre-construction meeting set on Tuesday, September 20, and we should be getting from that pretty good dates about when work will be done. The actual work is estimated to only take about 45 days, so I think there's an opportunity to come up with a good date that we can then plan around. This, working with Park and Planning on this has been remarkably difficult, and we have the same problems with the Sligo Mill Park Playground. And it, actually, I think it's something we're going to need to work on because there's no reason that we should be dragged through what, what happens on these projects. I want to bring to people's attention that today Metro announced its new schedule for Safe Track Surge Number 10 that will greatly affect Tacoma Park. From October 29th through November 22nd, the red line will not go through from Tacoma to downtown DC. It will be closed between Fort Totten and Noma Gallaudet. It means you need to take the green line or find other ways to go, or work from home, or all of the things that we started doing in the previous surge that affected us. This will be fairly significant. One of the things that we noted during the previous time when we were encouraging people to look at alternative ways to get to downtown DC in particular, is to look at the bus routes that go into Prince George's County to sites with the green line. I, you know, I think Fort Totten will be an absolute mess with people switching to the green line at Fort Totten. So you may want to get on the green line before Fort Totten, and I think people really need to think that through. It isn't until October 29th, it was going to have been earlier, but it will be a significant three-week time period.
So Tacoma Station will be open, only if you're going north or coming from the north.
It'll go to Fort Totten, or it'll go to, it'll go north, yeah.
Right.
If you want to go to Silver Spring, yeah, it works.
But if you go to Fort Totten, you don't want to get on the green line.
You have to get off, yeah.
Okay. Will the county or Womata provide shuttle service?
There are, certainly going to be bus shuttles and a variety of other kinds of services. I think it's going to be fairly significant. I think people should count on other options.
Okay.
Wanted to mention that stormwater billings is going out this week, and they're being sent in hard copy. People can pay by mail or online. We do, we are moving to an option to be able to get an email bill and then pay online so you don't get a letter. That's going to be for the next time. There's a couple people that we know already want them and they're in our system, but we need to set up our new financial system so that does this automatically to those who wish. So that's a movement that we're making. The other thing, we are talking about the Flower Avenue Green Street this evening for a brief time, and I do have some additional information that I shared with council attached to my comments. I think that's it.
Any questions for this?
Yeah. With regard to the Carroll Avenue Bridge, when I, I have found that on public SHA projects, like we had over on New Hampshire Avenue that ran over, that by talking to the people working on the job with the white hats on, that you can find out an awful lot that you're never going to find out through normal channels. And I had the opportunity last Saturday, I think, one of those blisteringly hot days, to walk across the pedestrian bridge and was talking to Jamal, who's an SHA inspector. And we were talking about how the fact that the project is proceeding ahead of schedule, in fact, well ahead of schedule.
Please knock on a lot of wood here.
And basically, he said at the rate that they are proceeding, and this is one person's opinion, that they hope to be able to have the bridge completed by the holidays, which would put it about seven months ahead of the finish line. And if you look at the project, as I do, you can see that all the vertical members, except for one, have been poured, those, the things that stick up from the arches, and that the next step is laying the roadbed, the horizontal part of the bridge. I don't know what, how much truth to it is, but I know in talking to Ian Chamberlain about the project, just casually, that, you know, they know that Keywit, the contractor, who's really good at this bridge building stuff, is in fact tearing through the project really quickly.
Apparently, the bridge didn't take a lot of work to demolish, it pretty much came down on its own.
Yeah. So I don't want, I'm not trying to get people's hopes unrealistically because we all know that's kind of a dumb thing.
We are thrilled that there, that it's a good group of guy, a good group of people working on that, and it, and they seem to be moving right along.
So I just wanted to share scuttlebutt. Just classify it as scuttlebutt.
Thank you. Councilmember Mel?
Yeah, just a bit of quick follow-up on that. I'd also note that the crew hosted a kids' tour of the site a few weeks ago, which is a nice thing to do.
Oh, yeah.
A quick suggestion on the name for the committee, just so to throw my suggestion in the hat, the Junction Information Board, JIB, it's quicker. The, we have, we're, we will have somebody to represent us in Montgomery County with the county council now, and if Park and Planning has been as difficult as it is, and we know their budget is a problem, an easy thing for us to focus on is the budget for Park and Planning Commission.
Excellent.
And maybe that, maybe that earns us some love on project support. And then the last thing I wanted to just mention and flag is that I've asked a few times with regard to the pension liability, for a projection from our auditor or other experts on what happens five and 10 and 15 years out, because it shouldn't just continue to grow forever. There should be an inflection point where we have people who are cashing out and enough people cashing in, because it, because it's currently still a, you know, new fund, that at least for the police pension liability, that it starts peaking or leveling off. And so it would be great to know what that timeline looks like as an informational point before we try to figure out whether we're comfortable or not with the level of debt.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We will be sharing information. I think we're, we're hoping for November 9th that they're coming.
It's set.
Oh, it is set, okay. And so.
Will that, that kind of estimate be part of the presentation or can it be?
It will, it will to an extent. It's, it is a complex way that they, that they count that, but they know that's what you want to know. So I think they'll focus on trying to provide the information as best they can.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We have minutes to adopt tonight, minutes from July 6th and 13th. Would someone like to move those?
Some move?
Councilmember Mel, second, Councilmember Smith, any changes, discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Nope, minutes are adopted. All right, we have our first voting item, our only voting item this evening, a single reading ordinance authorizing additional expenditures for development of the Flower Avenue Green Street design.
This was information that we did provide as part of the presentation by the Public Works Director, it's last week, and she's available if there's some questions. It, as the cover sheet indicates, that this is to do some additional work that hadn't been part of their, their schedule. I wanted to clarify the issue about what the 95% design means. Normally, you have a, as they prepare the plans, they get almost, so they're almost perfect plans at 90%, and that's the usual thing that's reviewed before you have the 100% drawings that then go out for bid. In this event, State Highway has decided that they want to look at a step that's in between there, 95%. So work had to be done to prepare the plans in such a way that SHA could review them at even closer to almost 100%. So it took extra design time. This is not to say that they're just doing 95% of the work or we're paying for 95% and something else happens. It's the way that they identify how complete the set of drawings is that before they're ready to go to bid. The amount that is being proposed to be added to the contract is, I just had it, forty, let's see, now I've lost my track of which one it is, $46,550. This money is in the budget, it's just not allocated to this contract, and it brings the total design cost for the work to $573,677. Attached to the city manager report, it's also being added on the website on the Flower Avenue item, is kind of a history of the change in the scope of the design work since the project was first begun. It went out for Design Service Award in 2012. At that time, we did not have an in-depth working relationship with WSSC and Washington Gas and even Pepco on elements of the project, it wasn't going to deal with those. Nevertheless, those utilities basically told us that after we did the work, they'd tear up the street. And we're like, no, let's, let's work together. That did require more work, and it required a coordinate, level of coordination that took some time. And the documentation is here. One of the questions that the mayor asked me was, you know, hasn't this been brought to the council multiple times? And in fact, my brief look-through was 24 times the Flower Avenue Green Street project has come before council to talk about design and/or budget. And so we tried to be as completely open with this information as possible. We've worked very closely with the residents, with the stakeholders in the area. I think it's a great project, but it is something that is a lot of money and it, and it does require a lot of attention. This is for the design work, this is not for the construction work. And so the whole issue of bonding for projects, we have a lot of grant money that's coming to us, that information is on the website, but we'll be going through that more as we get closer to construction drawings and going out to bid. I can answer any questions you might have?
Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar? No. And then Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, go first. Thank you.
I appreciate the background you gave on the Flower Avenue project. You know, when I was first elected, I made this a priority. I met with Ms. Braithwaite, the Director of Public Works, and asked her to walk me through it. What I saw was, in concept, a great idea, but I knew that there was a lot more potential. And so at that time, I worked with my colleagues to allow the city to actually make investments in the project. Because back then, the city would not use general funds for this project. This is probably the largest investment the city has made in Ward Five in the last 25 years at least.
Yeah, I'm blanking out on projects in Ward Five.
There you go.
Other than small stormwater-type projects.
Right. I think that this would be a huge game change for not just the residents of Flower Avenue, but throughout the ward. And there will also be a lot of benefit for Silver Spring. Even though Silver Spring has given us nominal amount of money, $200,000, they will see a huge benefit from this project. The money that we're receiving from The money that we're receiving from the State Highway Administration, $696,000. Can you remind us how that money is giving to the city? That is a grant, is my understanding?
Right. A long time ago, this was a state highway. And there was a, there was X amount of money in State Highway's budget to sometime repave it, and they kept putting it off and putting it off and putting it off. When it finally came up that there was some discussion about green streets, because that's something that is a highly looked at for kind of project, it made sense to think of Flower Avenue to do that. Basically, State Highway said, well, the amount of money that we would spend on a contractor to do paving, we will give to you through a grant for this project. It wasn't the total amount that they had available for it, but it was a good amount. And, and so we appreciated that. That was for a fairly simple project on our, even on, in our original concept of the plan. So that was the first major contribution to the project.
And the county is going to give us $200,000 to construct a sidewalk on their side of the street, which might be just a piece of a sidewalk?
Right. The $200,000 was a set amount of money that was in the county's capital improvement program, always for some really way out year, for a concept study for a sidewalk. So they gave it to us for the sidewalk.
And then, can you just talk about the federal funding, the TAP?
I'm not as good at talking at the TAP one. This may be something that, that Ms. Braithwaite can, but, and it's a substantial amount of money, and-
And at that time, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We were the only municipality in the state of Maryland.
We got two TAP funds funded projects at the same time. It was great. We're really pleased with that. Nevertheless, they come with a much level, greater level of specificity on how we do biddings, on how things get reviewed. So there's a complexity. We're glad for the money, but there's a complexity that comes with those funds.
Right. And just finally, I just would like to thank city staff. Ms. Braithwaite, your staff has been fantastic working on this project. You know, dealing with the Chesapeake Bay folks.
And we got a small grant from them.
Yes. They have said just nothing but fantastic things about this project. I spoke at the conference on clean water this past year. They love this project. I mean, we're going to be leaders in stormwater management, not just the first municipality to charge a stormwater fee, but we're actually doing great projects that are going to help the bay. So I, I thank the city manager for her presentation once again, and I hope my colleagues don't see this as the last investment in Ward Five. That we don't have to wait another 20 or 50 years to see money significantly go to the residents of Ward Five. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. You mentioned that the $54,000, if that's the amount, whatever the amount is-
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand, sorry. Is in the budget. So what, if it's in the budget, what's it in there for? Or in what, in what category?
It's for the project. What we, our provisions in the, in, through our purchasing code is that if something costs more than $10,000, it needs to be approved by the council. So this is an adjustment in the contract for the contractor and the contracted amount that they would receive for their work.
But that's coming from the amount that we approved for this project in the budget?
Right. And so what that does is it takes some from the construction funds.
Okay.
But it's all for the Flower Avenue project.
So we're not literally voting new money in the sense that it's an adjustment to the-
We're not doing a budget amendment.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, can you talk just a little bit about, because this question came up for a number of people in the, people look around at all parts of the city, on some of the email lists? How, to what extent is this, these are sort of things that came up that had to be addressed because of SHA you mentioned, or because of some of the other partners in it, or because better ways, but potentially more costly ways are found of doing things versus just because it takes a while, construction costs a little more than it did last year? And I know, I'm not saying dollar for dollar, but how much of it is tied to changes that external forces that we're working with asked us to, or required us to do, if that makes sense?
A large amount. There's, as Councilmember Smith mentioned at the beginning, we didn't put a lot of attention to bus stops and some lighting. So those were added into the project. But a huge proportion of the complexity of the work was, was working with these utilities and the partners, and how that all worked together.
And just the last question. So if, if the balance that we need to raise to do the project, assuming we didn't get any more grants or other sources of funds, were to be bonded out, does it, does bonding mean the state just gives us the money? Does bonding mean we borrow it and pay it then?
This is borrowing. And for the TAP funds, the city has to put money on the table. And so it's about a million dollars.
Okay. But so that would be paid in one year or in, over, over time?
It would be paid over time.
Okay.
And that's still to be, that's still to be decided by the council about what that recommended amount of time is.
Okay.
And it beats part of what you judge with other budgeting items. So you have a sense about what's appropriate.
But could it be spread out longer than the time that it takes to do the construction? Or?
Oh, yeah. It could be a 30-year bond. I mean, I don't know that that's what I would recommend. But there's a, there's multiple time periods that are available.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Schultz?
I just want to get clarification. We seem to have eluded from manager comments on Flower Avenue. And I'm just confused. Are we on agenda item number one here?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, we are, okay. Couple of questions. One question is, is that in, in, in the information I've received from you in the last day or so, it's clear that the State Highway Administration is calling a lot of the shots. And what I don't understand is that this isn't, is no longer, and hasn't been for a number of years now, a state highway. We made that swap out probably about four or five years ago. And I realize, but I mean, so I'm, I'm questioning, and I, and I know that this, they have put like the $696,000, but that was my, sort of like, sort of saying, take the money because thank gosh, we don't have to deal with it anymore. So why are we responsible for, or why do they see themselves as responsible for monitoring the design and approving, like doing something at the 95% design level when it's not a state highway?
That has more to do with the responsibility for implementing the TAP grant, overseeing the TAP grants. Is that, Daryl? Yeah. So for all the TAP road construction grants on state highways, they go through and approve them to ensure that everything's being followed correctly?
I just, it just seems a bit of an irony that the cost, that it's caused, they're giving the additional costs and time, design costs and engineering costs, are taking away from the, the TAP, the million forty-dollar TAP grant. I mean, at some point, you might say, keep the damn grant. We'll just thank you. We'll design this street ourselves. You guys will just keep your nose out of things.
It's similar to the ERA grants, the federal grants that were done earlier on in the Obama administration, where in order not to be charged with saying that this is just throwing money at things and, and stuff doesn't work well, an enormous amount of attention has been given to documenting how you're doing the bidding process, documenting each stage of everything so that every penny can be counted for. And it does cost money to do that.
Yeah, it does. I'm not going to ask you what percentage or how much. I mean, that's the point, the point has been made. The other thing, isn't so much a question, but is, is a comment about the, this project. And it's pretty, it's become clear to me. I mean, this project has been ongoing as long as I've been on the city council. And it has, we might refer to these as cost overruns, but I don't see it as cost overruns. What I see this, how I view it, is that this project has literally evolved tremendously. And so it's not the same project that we were talking about five or six years ago when we first conceived of it. And frankly, it is to me a magnificent demonstration of intergovernmental coordination, something that probably, most of us probably would have said back then, oh, well, you, you could never get this kind of coordination with all these major utilities.
I think you're right. I think we wouldn't have, I think we didn't think of it.
And it also is involved now, most recently, Washington Adventist University, just as, just another component of this whole thing. So the beneficiaries of this are all of these utilities, as well as the city, as well as the residents and the people who'll drop, be driving through. I wouldn't, I would hope that this could be documented in such a way is that it would become a case study, a national case study, of what you're up against when you want to do a green street and do it right, and how complicated it is. Because this is an example of what we've done. And I think it would shine a bright light on Tacoma Park and all the, all the partners in this process. Because there's a lot of them. It seemed extraordinarily, it's an amazing thing. I mean, we just sort of, kind of fumbled our way along with it, month after month, year after year. But it, but you step back from it and you realize that this is an amazing under accomplishment. Even we even, we don't even, you know, it's still at least another year away before we start any construction at all. And who knows that it may even get a lot more complicated. And once they start digging up the earth, Lord knows what we'll probably find. We'll probably find, you know, artifacts from some, some archaeological artifacts. And the next thing you know, we'll have the Smithsonian in, in here. But, but I think we should, we can take pride in it. And I think, I think we ought to take, make an effort when we get done and catch our breath to, to make, to publish this as a case study.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a question and just a couple comments. And this may be for Ms. Braithwaite. Where, in terms of the design aspect, is it just the outside company or agency that is leading that effort? Or does the city have some involvement in providing some specs that, at least for the, the aesthetic aspects of the green design, show some cohesiveness and consistency with other landscapes or streets within the city? Because I think one very important point about this and why I strongly support it is that it's another sort of gateway into the city.
Right.
And I think it would be great if the design, obviously really the construction, less so the design, contemplates that when people come in from Piney Branch, that they know, okay, now I'm in Tacoma Park, because this looks like the rest of Tacoma Park. And I don't know if there's an answer to that.
Well, I'll just say that the aesthetic and the design sensitivity has really been flushed out through the community meetings that we had and through the council participation. So those aspects, and people came forward to our design folks and, and said what they wanted to see. In some cases, it's, you know, it's sidewalks, it's curb, it's crosswalks. I mean, they are what they are. But they've been talked about enough and pulled together information from the residents enough so that this will very much feel like a community-driven project. People have been intimately involved in decisions about where the sidewalk goes and who gives easements and who doesn't. And so it's really been a collaborative effort. And sometimes we've had to work around people that aren't willing to, you know, put that much skin in the game, per se. So it, it's definitely been a, a design aesthetic that's been developed from the ground up. State Highway has to do with what kind of concrete mix is, you know, what's your MOT? What kind of signs do you have to have? How you have to justify the various three different call-outs for different kinds of products? So it's, it's more the technical details.
That creates its own consistency, I presume?
We do, though. We have had heavily, heavy staff involvement in everything from treason, whatever. So it, it certainly, where, where we're able to handle an aspect of it, we do.
Okay. And that was the only question. In terms of just my position on it, I think Mr. Hubner's point is a legitimate one. And I think some council members and formal council members have raised that issue. I think that should be applied to any city project where we're investing taxpayer dollars to ensure that, you know, we are keeping a close eye on cost and ensuring that, you know, these various entities and contracts that we have aren't getting out of hand and we're keeping it. So I would just reiterate that for you and your staff. But even with that being said, I think that concern is far outweighed by, I think, my support for this project, particularly as it pertains to our council priorities and how it applies to it. I think we've talked at length about the environmental sustainability aspects of it. But I have a close connection to this strip because my daughter and my son's school, the Purple School, is on this strip. And I have a lot of friends who live in the area. And there's, you know, there is sometimes legitimate, or sometimes illegitimate, but a lot of times legitimate concerns from people throughout the city about how our investment is far too often focused on the Old Town and the Tacoma Junction areas of, of the more affluent parts of our city. And I think that this area could use an investment. I think it would have a positive impact on the property values in the area. I think with children walking there, ensuring that there's more safe areas for children to walk along sidewalks, because that's what parents are doing on a daily basis, is important. But again, by, by applying the important aspects of making sure that we are keeping a close eye on the cost as we move forward, because construction's going to be even that much more.
Right.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you. I just wanted to be brief and say that I didn't realize it was 22 or 24 times, or whatever you said, that we've talked about this issue. But I appreciate the information we've had, the overall planning we've had in the project, share Councilmember Kreshi's concerns about, you know, budget. And just whenever we can, being as close as possible in our budget estimates. And where possible, it's great to overestimate and then have a number that comes lower than, than, than the other way around. But I'm happy to support the project.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Schultz mentioned that this is not the project that it was when we first envisioned this and took it up. And that it is, in some ways, has become pretty complicated. One area that I've lost a little track of is the sidewalks on the non-city side. And I wonder what the status of that is. Are, are there going to be sidewalks on the other side?
Yes.
For the full length?
For the full length, absolutely. That's a critical part of this project.
It certainly is, and I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
I would just say that the design is on the city's website. So the full, full 90% design is there, which will show all the detail.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask you one last question?
Yeah.
Could you just clarify? Thank you. Could you just clarify? So to go from 95% to 100%, is that going to require some more money?
No. It's, it's just that what was budgeted was, was having plans to be reviewed at the 90% level and then have it at the 100% level. But they have to like-
So this is an intermediate plan?
An intermediate plan.
Great. And I just want to say thank you to the city staff and the city manager for answering questions today that residents had. Even though we have discussed this a number of times, a project like this, we need reminders. Because we don't, we deal with a lot of things. This is a single reading ordinance. So do you need a roll call?
I do, but I need it to be moved.
Right, moved, I just, okay. So who would like to move this?
So move.
Councilmember Smith moved, second. Councilmember Siemens, roll call.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Kreshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Moving on to our work sessions this evening. The first work session is a discussion of request to name the city-owned wooded parcel by the Washington McLaughlin property. On our agenda item, we had three questions. I'd actually like to reverse the order of how we address those questions. So on the agenda cover sheet, you'll see we had three questions, three bullets. I'd like to start with the one that says, since Resolution 2015-3, which was attached to the agenda item, notes that some minimal development of the parcel the agenda item, notes that some minimal development of the parcel may be able to be done while preserving the important natural features of the property. Are there any concerns about naming the property if a portion is later sold off and/or developed? So basically, are we, do we want to move forward with naming the property? Let's start at the very beginning. Councilmember Mayo?
And you want to go through each question separately?
I think so. I think, yeah.
No concerns?
No concerns. All right. We could, Councilmember Koreshi?
No concerns.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Well, I have, I do, is one of the questions that came to my mind right off the bat was, are we limiting ourselves by naming, naming a particular bounded piece of property, by giving it a name, it's sort of, it, it changes things in people's minds. And so later on, if we come back in our infinite wisdom, with the goodwill of the community or without it, and want to consider making some changes on one edge of the property, as was talked about a couple of years ago, are we kind of creating some hurdle that, that would kind of keep us from having the flexibility that we need? I, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm just asking.
It's not the same thing as declaring it Parkland with a name. It's, it's giving a name to an area. So I think you're not necessarily, it's just more an emotional thing, potentially.
And I would say, given, since it's not too far from my home, I actually knew, I know Dorothy and the residents who have been working on that area, clearing it, people are already sort of calling it. So not to say that we should just do it because it's being done, but the truth is, is that the emotional move is our, the emotional move and attachment and calling it a Dorothy Woods has, yes, already taken place to kind of answer your question as well.
Yeah, I, I, I know Dorothy, and, and I, I think it's a wonderful idea to honor her in this way. I wonder, it's funny.
Well, let's not get in front of ourselves. Let's just answer, let's make sure we answer the question whether or not we should name it, and then we'll talk.
Go ahead.
So are there any, does anyone want to raise any concerns?
One other question, and I'm not sure this is exactly related to question three you, which we're doing now as question one, but there had been this comment I've seen in the past, that the cycle with the tax auction, we sort of missed our shot because the county didn't want to do it. So are we going to make sure we do that? Because doesn't that relate to, you know, what could potentially happen to the disposition of the property, or is that just a question of the value for us?
It's just money for us.
But are we going to make sure we do that?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
All right. So then it seems like we can move forward then. So the next question is, and maybe we'll take these, we could possibly discuss these two questions together, should there be a particular process in choosing a name, and or do we want to move forward this evening? Just to put it out there, one of the things is the, the city clerk did reach out to the commemoration committee, I'll just make sure I got their name correct.
Commission.
Commission. It is a commission. Thank you. I knew I was going to get that wrong. And, and they would be interested to be part of the, this process. This is, and Councilmember Schultz can speak to this better than I can, since he was one of the founders of the commission. But this is basically the type of thing that they've been tasked to do by the city council. So that is just one thing to consider. So Councilmember Mayo?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I think the name Dorothy's Woods is a wonderful name, and Dorothy Barnes is certainly a wonderful person to commemorate with the name and the, her history in the city and in this, this particular location. I think we should not, the best use of our time as council is to move forward fast, and I would simply propose, welcome to other ideas, but that we put together a resolution that supports naming the parcel Dorothy's Woods, that we ask the commemoration commission for their views on that, that perhaps we take the results of the resident survey that Ms. DeBala mentioned, provide that to the commission, or provide, let's say, the top three or four choices to the commission, and say, these are some of the choices that came up through the community. The council is planning to move forward with Dorothy's Woods. Welcome your views, and then vote on it that way.
All right. Councilmember Simmons?
I would agree that we should move forward quickly, as Councilmember Mayo suggested. I would like the community to consider naming it Dorothy Barnes Woods, since that's who it is commemorating, and so that although many people know that now, I don't want it to be lost in, in history.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
I can pretty much concur with what Councilmember Mayo says. I think it should, we should defer this to the commemoration commission. One, one of the things is, is that, and maybe that's, that's the name that we will have, something like that, but the point is, is that this is a, a community, citywide facility. It's a, will be a park or perhaps, but it's, and, and no doubt the folks that live right next to it have the most at stake emotionally about the, about these woods, and those, those who were friends of Dorothy Barnes and all that. But frankly, it's, it, why shouldn't it be a citywide, and that's what the commission's there to, to do, to sort of make sure that this is the appropriate name. No doubt that's what they'll do. I don't think it'll take that, take them very long to, to get back to us with that. But I, I do think we ought to honor the existence of the commission, and so that it helps set a precedent for all these other sort of things that may come down the pipe in future.
Councilmember Koreshi?
What, I, I, here's, I guess here's my, here's my response. I want to know what the commission is, because I, I don't really know. Forgive my ignorance of that issue. But I think I understand what they are, because you and I have discussed it before. But with that being said, I think that the community that lives there has spoken, I think, rather than getting lost in the bureaucratic, you know, system that often slows everything down, it's, I, I understand from Satyuan's email that two and a half times, like the next highest score was, the Dorothy's Woods was two and a half times higher. I like the name Dorothy's Woods, and I agree with Councilmember Simmons that we don't want that connection to Dorothy Barnes to be lost, because it's an excellent story about her history in those woods. So it may make sense to get the commemoration commission, assuming this is within their purview.
It is.
Not only involved on, I don't know, I, I wouldn't say blessing it, because I don't really believe that they should, but I think having their input on how we can commemorate Dorothy Barnes's story in terms of a demarcation or a plaque, or some kind of fixture on, on the property, where they can have a role. But I think that Dorothy's Woods is a great name, and I like Dorothy's Woods as opposed to Dorothy Barnes's Woods.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do believe that the council should move fast on this, but rather than a resolution, I would ask my colleagues to consider us directing the city manager to send a memo to the commemoration commission, make sure I get that right. To have them review the name, I mean, that's why they, a previous council created them. This is right up their alley. They should vet this whole process to make sure that it's following all the things that the council said that we wanted to see when we created the commission last year. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. I don't really think we should have a commission and then tell them what to do, so I would just rather have them decide, as opposed to us saying, you know, do whatever you want, but here's the thing that we already sort of think is it. So I'd rather just have the commission do what we established them to do.
Great. And for me, I think I agree that since we have this commission, we can put it to them, ask them to act quickly. Do we know when the next time they meet?
September 20th.
Oh, so they meet pretty soon. So they could, we could ask them to take it up then and get back to us. And I, I think the sense from at least the majority of the council is Dorothy Woods, or I would consider Dorothy Barnes Woods. I actually agree, that they can say, that the commission should know that there's a number, if we want to do a show of hands, of members of the council who also agree with the survey that was done of the residents in the area. Do we want to just take a quick handful of those people who would like to voice their opinion to the commission on either Dorothy or Dorothy Barnes Woods?
Yeah.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six. So.
Can I just point out that the, the commission will do, will enable the, what am I trying to say here? It will be doing more than just sort of blessing the name, because part of what the commission's charge is, is to create the historical data and information on why, why things get named the way they do, because what's happened in the past, we've had parks named, and people say, there's, there's no, no sources of information, there's, and, and then these things can get digitally recorded. And so if somebody goes online and wants to find out later, 10 or 20 years from now, that information will be, be there, and it'll be permanent. So it's like a historical preservation thing. Yep.
And I do think, and it was communicated to the commission that there is a desire, if we are moving in the direction of this name, to do it sooner rather than later because of Ms. Barnes' health, and we're hoping she stays healthy for a while, but she has moved out of the house to insisted living place, so we would like to, while she is still able to come and maybe enjoy a ceremony, to be able to do that. So, Councilmember Mayo?
Yeah, just commenting on the Dorothy Barnes versus Dorothy's Woods. And the reason I like Dorothy's Woods is that Dorothy Barnes's Woods sounds possessive. It sounds like they're her woods, not your woods, not my woods, not the neighborhood's woods. And the second thing is that it, personally, it makes me think of Dorothy as a little girl. So I imagine somebody growing up there instead of an adult, who, the person I know, who I've met, who I've interacted with, I think of the lifespan, I think of, I think of that. So for me, it just has that, you know, sort of emotional connection. And, and the way that I think, beyond asking the commemoration commission to weigh in on this particular name and see if they suggest something different, the, the great way that I think we should use the commemoration commission is to help us figure out the text for a plaque.
Yes.
That would say Dorothy Barnes is the following person, and this is what we'd want to put on a plaque. And that, and that, when I think about the commemoration commission, that, it wasn't that we were trying to get council and city out of all naming whatsoever, it's that where there was lack of direction, or confusion, or just really where we had too much work and we wanted them to play a role like benches and, and smaller features. So I think the plaque is a perfect space for them to help us figure out the text that really reflects the place, the neighborhood, and Dorothy. Thank you.
I can be called Dorothy Woods, yeah.
It's sounding a little bit more like Councilmember Smith's idea of direction to me to convey this information to the commemoration commission. Is that where you're going?
Yes, I think that's where we're going. Yeah.
Well, let me just, I mean, what I'd propose was, we, we know what a draft resolution would look like, I think, and what we're, we'd be asking the commemoration commission is to, to give us their opinion on the council moving forward with a proposal to name this parcel Dorothy's Woods. And that's the request for information. Like, I, I was assuming, I was sort of stating, I made it a statement, but it was really a question. I assume that the naming process takes place through a resolution. And so ultimately, what we would be telling the commission is, this is a process that will end with a resolution.
Right. I guess what I was hearing from other council members was, since their meeting is on the 20th, is next week, is have them, can you convey it, and then come back to us right away, versus, again, telling them, basically, this is what we're doing. So to tell them this is the sense of council, this is the direction we want to go, and if they raise any concerns.
Right.
You know, give them that opportunity, and then we can decide.
Yeah, they may raise questions that we need to address.
Sure. Happy to do that.
I mean, I know when this was first raised a few months ago, they weren't quite ready yet to do this. When we checked in with them this week, the commission said they were, would like to take this up. So they may have moved forward in their conversations about process and what they would like to do, so. And we can return to it very quickly, and we can return to it next Wednesday night, if we can get a report back from them after their meeting on the 20th.
Well, we want to move quickly, but it's not what you'd call an urgent matter.
Well, we keep, we kept moving it last year, so. Some people want it, yeah. So, all right. Last work session, our last work session tonight, we, I just wanted, we put on the agenda to discuss the results of our meeting on Monday, and I'll just recap a couple of notes. So on Monday evening, we had a special work session to discuss further the changing the date of the city elections, and I, again, want to extend my thanks to our elections board and our city clerk for all their work on this. Just to back up a moment, to give people who might be just tuning into this where, where we've been. So the city council has discussed the issue of changing the date of our election to sync with federal and state elections. There was an advisory question on our ballot last November. Given the results of that, and we decided to have the board of elections and the city clerk move forward with exploring what it would take to change the date and, of our election and sync it with federal and state. We, we found out over the last few months is that for the 2018 election, we will not be able to have a unified ballot. That is too soon to do that. But there is the possibility of having our election on, in 2018 at the same time as the state elections, so that, but we have two lines that people would have to go through and two separate ballots. What we went over, and people can review on video, on Monday evening was the board went through some logistics and how it may work, and some ideas that they had moving forward if we were to, again, move the election date. The board is having a meeting with the county on September 19th, so that is Monday, right? Yep, Monday, where they will discuss many of the issues that they presented with, to us on Monday night, because we still have to get word back from the county that we can actually do some of the things that we had discussed. In terms of things that the council raised, there, there will be an increase in the cost of elections, so there's a budget implication. We also talked about the need and potential difficulties of hiring judges and getting volunteers if we sync our elections. As we have, over the course of having these discussions, council members raised the desire and concerns about keeping the unique nature of our elections, as well as making sure that our elections stay nonpartisan. Benefits were also reiterated in terms of potential increase in engagement and participation, and looking at what other communities have done who have made this move. In addition, some people talked about future things we may consider, like mail in voting, and maybe even just switching our election day to a Saturday sometime in the future. So that's all to say, that's basically what we did on Monday night. I just wanted to take this time to recap that for everyone, and then to give my colleagues an opportunity if, as they thought about it, if there are other things they would like the board of elections to consider before the meeting on the 19th, or if I missed anything.
Is it good?
I do, okay?
So cool.
Yeah. All right. Does that sound good? I just want to turn to the city clerk and our elections board. Is there anything else you need to, from us before the meeting?
No. No, so, so our goal will be to, we're looking at voter experience and how far, how good a voter experience we can get through this process, and we'll report back and try to let you know what we learned.
Terrific.
And, and anyone is welcome to be there. It's, it's an open meeting. It's the, their county board of elections meeting.
Oh, terrific. Actually, maybe you send around the information. That would be helpful.
Yeah, okay. Pardon? What time is it? 2:30, I think, on Monday.
On Monday.
I'll send that around.
Can I just ask a question? When you say voter experience, do you just mean the impact on the individual Tacoma Park voter in the event that we go down this road, and what it would look like?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's going to be very helpful.
You know, one of the things that a resident raised with me was the idea, especially in a contentious presidential year, to wait a really long time in one line, vote, and then have to start over again with a really long line. You know, maybe there's a way that you wait in the line, and then you're served by the county and the city, one right after the other. So I mean, there's, there may be some options for, you know, making a process smoother. It may also have to do with the layout of the locations and that kind of thing, and I really appreciate that the board has spent a lot of time thinking those things through.
Great. And then next week, we do have tentatively scheduled a resolution on this. The reason I scheduled a resolution is because over the many months when we've discussed this, we've taken hand votes to kind of move us through the process, to tell the board to please continue their work on this, to investigate whether or not we can make this move. I thought at this point, when we have the information back, it would be good I thought at this point, when we have the information back, it would be good to actually take a vote on moving forward or not with changing our elections. That does not mean this is the last time we will vote on this, because we will need to have charter changes done, and we will have public hearings and votes on our charter, a city charter. So, but I just wanted to let people know, it's tentatively scheduled, depending on how the meeting goes, we may move it to the following week. All right. Well, that's it for us tonight. Thank you, everyone. We're turned.
Love it, love it, love it! And it's not 10 o'clock.